Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order. If you'd please stand and recite the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, a roll call, please.
Alderman Miller.
Present.
Alderman Dickerson.
Mayor.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Alderman Boffelman is absent. Alderman Reese.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
And Mayor Bowman.
Present, thank you. We do have a quorum. Well, we have a houseful tonight. Isn't this fun to have council chambers that looks like this? We have a couple of celebratory matters. We're going to start with a proclamation for Harrisonville High School kids. So if I can have a student council come up and join me, please. And if you'll just turn around and face the camera. And then I'm going to ask each of you to introduce yourself.
Oh, you're fine.
To the camera. Or just what you say a little bit?
Yeah.
This is Mr. President here, so go ahead and introduce yourself.
I'm Michael Schuler. I'm the president of our student council.
I'm Brizzy Simler. I'm the treasurer.
I'm Kathy Dooley. I'm the vice president of the student council.
I'm Colleen O'Reilly. I'm the secretary.
Welcome. We're glad that you're here.
Thank you for having us.
So, the proclamation I'm going to make tonight is to declare Blue and White Day for September 13th. I think something's going to happen on September 13th, right?
I think something's coming to mind.
Yes. So, this says, "Whereas the city of Harrisonville, the mayor, the Board of Aldermen, and the residents of this community wish to formally recognize the students and school faculty of our great city for displaying pride in themselves and their school and demonstrating the mighty Wildcat spirit by participating in Harrisonville Spirit Week. And whereas, Wildcat spirit is built on the pride and involvement not only of the students and teachers, but by the entire community, including parents, business leaders, elected officials, public service personnel, and senior citizens. And whereas, the city of Harrisonville would like to join with the school faculty and student body in thanking everyone for attending the citywide pep rally to celebrate homecoming 2019 and for displaying Wildcat pride. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Board of Aldermen of the city of Harrisonville, I, Mayor Judy Bowman, do hereby proclaim Friday, September 13th, 2019, as Blue and White Day in the city of Harrisonville, and urge all citizens to show their support by wearing blue and white during this day to honor our schools and our community. Congratulations, kids, for this. We're so proud of you.
Get a group picture?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, put that right around there.
Does that work?
Yeah, I think that'll be good. Big smiles, everybody. Three, two, one. Another one. Cool.
Thank you. Congratulations, kids. Okay. The action, kids. Come on in.
Action.
Attraction. Action. Well, I said action. You are action. And we have Police Chief Johnson over with us. I'm going to invite Alderman Gary Davidson to come down also. Hey. How are you doing? So this is a special group of kids. These are the traction kids. They are part of a program that the chief is going to tell you about. Actually, it's a program by Moda, I believe, was started back in 1995. And traction stands for teens taking action to prevent traffic crashes. You know, we could tell kids about safe driving and not to drive distracted and not to text and not to be on their phones and to buckle up and do all those things. But I think they're going to pay a whole lot more attention when it comes from their peers. And these young people are so excited about keeping their peers safe and enforcing, instilling safe-driving habits for them. So I'm excited that you're here. Chief, do you want to say something about these kids?
Here you go again. You saved all the thunder in telling them these things. I'm really proud to work with these kids, young adults. They took part of their summer, went to Columbia for three days, and learned how to come back and teach their peers to drive safe, not distracted driving, not drunk driving, and use seatbelt, phone down. So they're going to do several things throughout the year. They're working on a seatbelt check. They're going to check it early in the year. They're going to do their program throughout the year. They'll check again towards the end of the year to see if we've had any increase. They got lots of good ideas partnering with businesses, the police department. They're even working maybe towards random drug testing for throughout the school. So they have a lot of big ideas. It's a great group of kids. They've gotten together twice before school. They had a big whale out in front of school because the whale will roll. But they're doing a lot of great things to teach their peers to be safe so that we don't have fatalities.
Very good.
So I'm going to pass the microphone to them, and I want each of you to introduce yourselves.
I'm Brayden Tally.
I'm Leah Bartlett.
I'm Ireland. I'm the vice president of traction.
I'm Jesse, and I'm the president of traction.
I'm Grace Kirkman.
Carol Lumber.
I'm Braden Hall, friends.
I'm Court Devini.
I'm George Fries, and I'm the traction liaison.
I'm Sherry Rowan, sponsor.
I'm Officer Jacobs, and I'm the sorrow at the high schools. I've got to be with these kids all day.
Also, my dad that these kids worked with the school and filled out the proper paperwork. So traction is now an official club, and I believe that they can receive a letter if they participate enough. So that's a big step right out of the gate.
These are your future leaders, folks. I am proud to make a proclamation for this group. It says, "Whereas traction, teens taking action to prevent traffic crashes, is a statewide program sponsored by the Missouri Department of Transportation, Traffic and Highway Safety Division, and Cape Girardeau Safety Communities. And whereas, the goal of traction is to empower youth to take an active role in traffic safety prevention by providing motivation, leadership training, and skill development to challenge students to explore knowledge, attitudes, and behaviors related to traffic safety issues. And whereas, through their involvement in traction, Harrisonville High School team members have strengthened their individual determination and have created and implemented specific action plans to address traffic safety issues within their school and community. Therefore, I, Judy Bowman, mayor of the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, do proclaim August 19th as traction day. Congratulations." President, step forward. Everybody come in so we can do a picture.
Yep. I told you that they went to traction in August. They also go back in March to compete and show what they've done throughout the year. And they'll try and go be competing for traction team of the year, which Harrisonville won two years ago. So belt won last year. We're hoping to bring it back to Harrisonville this year.
All right. Big smiles, everybody. You look at anybody you want.
Please give them another round of applause. What an impressive group of young people. Chief Over, thank you for your involvement with them. All right, we're going to move on to public participation. At this point, I would ask anyone in the public who would like to address the board to step forward now and give your name and address for the clerk into the microphone. Seeing no one, I'll close public participation. And I'll ask you at this point to please silence your cellphones, and we'll move on to our agenda. First is the approval of the minutes of the Board of Aldermen work session from August 5th. May I have your approval?
Sir.
I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Davidson to approve the minutes of the Board of Aldermen work session from August 5th. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that passes. Now, the approval of the minutes of the Board of Aldermen regular meeting for August 5th. I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Miller to approve the minutes of the Board of Aldermen regular meeting August 5th. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that also passes. Moving on to the agenda items, Harrisonville High School Homecoming Parade. Chief Over, you're a quick dresser.
Better than I'm dressing, Mayor.
Thank you for that.
Mayor and Board of Aldermen, for you tonight is the annual Harrisonville Homecoming Parade, scheduled for September 13th. They are going to stage in City Park. Come out of the park in Pollo Ash Street, Independence, up to Pearl Street, across the square, take Pearl Street onto Bradley, and then back to the park this year. We have worked, city staff, with the police department has worked a couple different meetings with the school to come up with this route and work through any problems. I think they were productive meetings. We don't see any problems with it. It's gone off the, out of hitch for several years, and we're happy to bring it back again this year, just hoping for good weather. So we recommend approval. entertain any questions?
Do you expect this year to be a little easier on the parade route?
Much easier. The, the school did ask to go across the highway again, and we strongly encourage it and talked to them in two different meetings. This is the route they mildly submitted. So last year, we went across at the four-way, it backed up traffic, frustrated drivers. It's just a matter of time before we have an accident or have a childhood. We don't want that. So we encourage them to not submit that route. This is the route that they tried to submit.
Any other questions or comments from the board? We have the student council in the audience tonight. Hello, everyone. Wave to us. Parade wave, there you go. Any questions or comments for the chief? All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Milner to approve the request for the Harrisonville High School homecoming parade for 2019. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Congratulations, young people. We'll see you on September 13th. Chief, log cabin festival event permit.
Yes, ma'am. Next on your agenda is the log cabin festival permit. They are requesting, as always, the first weekend in October. This year, it's October 4th and 5th. You'll have your packet with many different items that they have requested, parade and band and the Union Garden stages and bladers, and my response to each of them with an estimated cost. This is, I believe, around the 10th year for such festival. It was the district festival in the past. This year, it's the back to the log cabin festival. Quite a long list, but it's no different really than what we've had in years past. They are trying to expand the boundaries a little bit. We discussed that with them because we had, we, as the city, had some traffic concerns with where traffic has been in one, park, and two, get through. So they modified a few of their things, such as the Beer Garden Camp and Wall Street and more, the Union Garden Camp and Wall Street. So they wanted to move Pearl Street. I didn't feel traffic could get through, so then they decided to move it down to hotel parking lot, as we discussed earlier tonight. So that's what their recommendation is. Total estimated cost for the event is $8,800, $8,800. And then I believe we've got to move a couple of electrical to accommodate and...
The second one's about $2,000.
It's a total of $2,000 to move both of those, so...
Is that part of the $8,800?
It is not.
Okay. So the cost would be $10,800.
Estimated cost.
Estimated, yeah.
That's all I really have unless you have any questions.
Also comparable to last year or the last one?
It's a little bit higher. I mean, we get a little bit of an increase. Last year, I know we added staffing for trash. I think we went from one to two of them, or actually, we went till later in the day with those. And last year, we actually added from one police officer to two all the time. So it's comparable to last year, a little increase, but last year was a significant increase. Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Patterson. Is our trash hauling service going to provide the dumpster like WCA has in the past?
Yes, as far as I know, they are.
So we don't have that expense then?
Director, Superintendent Jacobs is the one that takes care of that. They never, not on trucks.
I think it's part of the, oh, correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments about the festival permit? We've got some of the festival people here in the audience. Thank you for coming. I entertain a motion.
Make that motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson with a second from Alderman Miller to approve the log cabin festival event permit. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Congratulations, Joe and Bing.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to a great festival.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, chief. Still on the agenda, aren't you?
I'm not leaving yet. Next for you is the biannual tow agreement. We don't contract with one tow service. We use a rotation. With using a rotation, they have to follow our guidelines. So they sign up for it. The guidelines are in the packet. Both Miller Tow and Johnson Tow have signed the agreement this year. Very minimal changes. We did change the fees that they can charge to make them more comfortable with what's charged throughout the county. We did one have, had one verbiage change due to an incident we had, and that was if one of the companies or contractors has an incident or a criminal offense, that we can review the contract. Other than that, those are about the only changes we are recommending approval of these two to move forward. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I'm sorry, you didn't catch the second. Who was the second? Okay. I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson with a second from Alderman Reese to approve the non-preference tow contract for, tow agreement for 2019. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Congratulations, chief. Council Bill 53.
Council Bill 53 is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen, the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, to authorize the city administrator to execute a purchase agreement for 14 sets of personal protective equipment, turnout bunker gear and equipment from Edfeld Fire Incorporated, amount of $25,821.60, and establishing an effective date.
Good evening.
Good evening, chief.
This is just a replacement here that we originally budgeted for 2019, but I almost said 2020. So initially, whenever I went out for a bid, went out initially just for kind of a ballpark figure, what it was going to take to outfit quite a few people. When I come back with it, it was considerably lower. So I was able to get a little bit more turnout gear than what I thought I was going to get. Initially, I thought I was only going to be able to get about seven full sets. The only thing that it doesn't include in this is that helmets, and I have an abundancy amount of helmets. Maybe something we may have to research later down the road, but the life expectancy on a helmet is a lot longer than a set of turnout gear. So, I mean, try to educate you guys a little bit on turnout gear. You can buy all kinds of different kinds of turnout gear out there, but the main thing we look at is for moisture layer protection, thermal protection, even all down to the stitch. It's what you're going to get your most durable out of your gear. Now, I will tell you that there's always a possibility that you get into a very hot fire situation, not realize you're in a hot fire situation, and burn a thermal layer. We hope that doesn't happen, but it does happen. So in that event, we'd have to replace it at a later date again. So that's kind of something we do on an annual basis, at least biannually, is inspect our gear to see if we got into a hot environment where we didn't realize it was hot and it broke down the thermal layer. So anyway, there's, there's several guys on the department that have lost weight, gained a little bit of weight. So, and we want to make sure that their gear fits right on them. We don't want too tight or too loose on them because you can get burned up underneath there very easily if it doesn't fit right. They're also a real proponent of the firefighter cancer right now, and this would give some people the opportunity to have two sets of gear. Otherwise, they wouldn't be able to come back after a fire and put their dirty gear in the washer, which we have. It's not a regular washer, and they would have a clean set to put on afterwards. It's the ultimate goal in the future. In a sense, this may help a little bit, and the future's going to be more. So when we put out quotes on this, you're going to have a whole bunch of people going to say, well, we can give you the gear with it, but when you start throwing a bunch of the stuff that was in the attachments to it, it shows it a lot too, the gear. And so a lot of people can't make what we're buying. And so, and it's, the sky's the limit on gear. We're familiar with the people that we're buying the gear from. It's a, they're very good about telling us what we need and, and so on. And if you looked on everything, the total amount of everything was considerably lower than what the budgeted amount was. Another thing we're trying to do also is they're, they're, they're wanting you to protect your, they want you to protect and replace out these carbon protective cloths once go over your face and your head so you don't get burned. And they want you to replace those more often because that's where most of your carcinogens come across, is to skin from that area. So I'm making a recommendation that you go with the bid with them. They're really good and prompt. We're looking at probably, we ordered these tomorrow. I'm more looking at about seven to 10 weeks for delivery time. And they warranty everything for, I think it was like three years or something like that, unless you have other issues that have to break down. So anybody got any questions?
Yeah, dear. You said you're trying to get everybody two sets of bunker gear.
Trying to, yes.
Okay. You got $9,000 less than the quote. I mean, is, is it a possibility you could get some more? And how, how close would that get you to, if you decided to use all the $35,000 as budgeted?
Right now, I have 20, 21 full-time people. So if, nobody can find what I was looking for here. According to the quote, each set of bunker gear total is 1730. I mean, so you're looking at about $9,000 difference, so that would probably get pretty close to everybody a second set.
There's a reason why you didn't go ahead and...
Well, originally, whenever I, truthfully, when I went to quote this out, I didn't know the proper way to quote it out because it was like the first time I'd ever done it. And I was afraid that whenever I quoted it out, that I was going to go considerably over budgeted. And then when I got it back, it surprised me. So basically, what I was trying to do was try to get what I can get right now and to get people, because I've got a couple of people that really need gear right now. We can increase that amount up to the total budgeted amount, but...
Man, does that include, you were talking about the...
It includes the coat, the pants, the suspenders. It does not include the boots, which I have an abundancy amount of boots. We just bought those in 2017. And, and then it also covers the hood and the gloves. So you're looking at probably, you're looking at probably $1,800 and almost $19 for per set. That includes everything, so you're looking at...
You have another five sets.
Another five sets. I mean, that wouldn't quite outfit everybody, but I do, and I think it was 2016 was the last time we had a gear retro fit for everybody. I know that's when I got my last set, so, and I would, this wouldn't include me because I didn't go there. This is cold. It's bad, it's bad in the wide hill to be inside, although sometimes I wish I was. So...
Maybe if you go from 14 to 25 sets, you could maybe even bigger discount.
Right. And that I'd have to come back to, I'd have to go to talk to Phil Fire and find out if they give us any discount when it comes to the abundancy amount. A lot of times when we get bids, they, in quotes, they tack us on to somebody else's thing. Like, for example, the Scott Airpacks we bought in 17, they tacked us on to Sedalia Fires. So we got a little bit more discount advice.
So could we save possibly? I mean, if it's something you want to do, if you would be, if you would like to have as many as possible, just say, you know, we could, can we move on this with the...
Up to the budgeted amount?
Up to the budgeted amount at your discretion?
After the amendment.
Can we do that?
And the motion, make a motion and then amend it to the amount.
Can we do that? If that's something that you want to do.
It's like I said, whenever I quoted the amount, I considered it to go to the extensive life. I figured for everything total, that for as long, I'd be able to get seven sets, and then whenever I come, they come back to me with it. And we went to, we have a Quaker brand right now, which is the more expensive brand. And so I did a little background check, and this is on Breeden gear. And I know that Central Cass uses it, and I'm familiar with it down there. It's a good breakdown, it's a good gear. It's a good kind of gear. Another thing I've been was too, is a lot of the newer gear you get, the first time you put it on, there's a break-in time with the Breeden, there's not. You can put it on and go right pipe fire with it, so...
Do you know what your total budgeted amount was?
It was $35,000.
$35,000.
That was what I budgeted in the cattle line.
I make a motion that we accept Council Bill 53, and then we can amend it after we're okayed. Is that right?
Or should we make an amendment first?
You can make a motion to amend it in an amount not to exceed $35,000.
That's my motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson to amend Council Bill 53 to read, to approve the purchase of turnout gear not to exceed $35,000. I have a first by Alderman Dickerson and a second by Alderman Dorhoff. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Resolution 53 becomes...
I'm... 92 over the resolution.
Oh, thank you. We voted on the amendment. Now we need to vote on the resolution. Do you want to read it again?
Council Bill 53 is a resolution of the Board of Aldermen, the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, to authorize the city administrator to execute a purchase agreement for 14 sets or more of personal protective equipment, turnout bunker gear and equipment from Edfeld Fire Incorporated, amount not to exceed $35,000, and establishing an effective date. First reading of Council Bill 53 as amended.
Now we'll take a motion.
Motion approved.
A motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Becomes Resolution 035. The public hearing for the tax rate. That would be you, Marcella.
Good evening, mayor and board. This evening, as part of the public hearing, is to set the annual tax levy as required each year. The, this 2019 was a reassessment year. Generally, as reassessments, the assessments values go up, so your property values go up, your tax levy goes down so that you still maintain what the state likes to use as a revenue mutual terminology, so you cannot generate any more revenue because of the value increases in the tax levy. So that's what is presented to you tonight. Last year's rate combined between general and park was 66.58 cents, and the 2019 proposed rate is 64.25 cents. And that is presented this evening for public comment during the public hearing and/or any questions that any of you all may have. I'll be happy to answer them.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak pertaining to the tax levy during this public hearing? Any questions from the board for Ms. McCoy? All right. We'll close the public hearing.
Thank you, mayor.
Council Bill 54.
Council Bill 54 is a tax levy ordinance of an ordinance levying attached for the current expenses of the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, upon rental property and all tangible personal property of whatsoever nature and character subject to taxation by the city of Harrisonville for such purposes, also levying a special tax upon the afforded properties for public parks for a total tax levy of .6425. First reading, Council 054.
As we just discussed, the tax levy does go down compared to last year, and it will generate revenue in total as we start to develop the 2020 budget. And so the maximum prior year adjusted revenue was calculated at $734,252 for general fund and $166,052 for parks. Total revenue permitted for current year as in 2020, as we develop this budget, is $748,203 for general fund and $169,207 for parks. Those numbers you'll see presented in your budget as the revenue numbers. We do not get to very, that's not a variable number, that's not a negotiable number. That number will be defined by the state auditor and certified by the county and put on the tax rolls going forward. My final request is that you can send this on first reading because everything has to be submitted before the first of September, and we do not currently have a meeting scheduled before then.
I move that Council Bill 54 goes to a second reading.
Okay, we have a motion from Alderman Dickerson with a second from Alderman Miller to advance Council Bill 54 to its second reading. All in favor? I'm sorry, roll call.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Bachman, absent. Alderman Reese. Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Council Bill 54.
Council Bill 54 is a tax levy ordinance of an ordinance levying a tax for the current expenses of the City of Harrisville, Missouri upon real property and all tangible personal property of whatsoever nature and character subject to taxation by the City of Harrisville for such purposes, also levying a special tax upon the afforded described properties for public parks for a total tax levy of .6425. Second reading, Council 054.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Bachman, his absent. Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
And Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 54 becomes ordinance 3474. Council Bill 55.
Council Bill 55 is an ordinance of the City of Harrisville, Missouri amending Title VI Business and Occupations of the Harrisville Code ordinances to include Chapter 670 regulating medical marijuana facilities. First reading, Council 055.
Is there anyone in staff that's addressing that? I think, Counselor, you have reviewed that.
Yes.
Part of the code, yes.
We've been through all of this before. With the adoption of constitutional amendment, we need to adjust our code to establish parameters by where and how you can have and utilize medical marijuana in the City of Harrisville. If you don't, then there won't be any local prohibitions. And so, for example, on the first page, you can see that we talk about there's no public consumption of medical marijuana in the City of Harrisville. So these are just general parameters widely recommended by the Missouri Municipal League. Even the state of Missouri is suggesting that these types of restrictions be placed on it, and our proposal is very consistent to other, what other cities are doing across the state.
Move to approve Council Bill 55.
Second. I have a motion to approve Council Bill 55.
It's an ordinance seeking a first reading.
From, yes, this is first reading. A motion from Alderman Dickerson with a second from Alderman Miller.
We want to move to a second reading, though. Best motive of motion is to move it to a second reading.
Okay, so Alderman Dickerson wants to restate his motion, which is to advance Council Bill 55 to its second reading. Alderman Miller, do you wish to second that?
Yes.
Okay, so Alderman Miller will second that. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
And Alderman Bachman, absent.
Second reading.
Council 055 is an ordinance of the City of Harrisville, Missouri amending Title VI Business and Occupations of the City of Harrisville City Code of ordinances to include Chapter 67 regulating medical marijuana facilities. Second reading, Council 055.
Roll call.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Bachman, absent. Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 55 becomes ordinance 3475. I wanted to address the Chapter 430 public hearing and the ordinance. And I'm going to ask the board to consider postponing this to our next meeting. The new Alderman did not get a copy of the revisions to that ordinance, so they don't know what the changes were that Mr. Fairfield made to the ordinance, so they're not able to vote on it. So I would like to request the board to approve postponing the voting on Chapter 430 public, I'm sorry, the Chapter 430 ordinance to the next meeting.
That'd be fine. One thing you might want to do, if anybody's here, you could send this, spend notice for the public hearing. I had forgotten that when you asked me about this earlier. You could go ahead and have the public hearing, close it. We could have first reading and then just pass it to the next, the next meeting for full consideration then. I had forgotten about the public hearing. My apologies.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the board about the Chapter 430 revisions? If not, we'll close that public hearing. And now Council Bill 56.
Council Bill 56 is an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of Harrisville, Missouri repealing Chapter 430 of the City Code and enacting in Luther of an amended Chapter 430 Urban Redevelopment Regulations of the City of Harrisville, Missouri and establishing effective date. And that will just be the first reading.
Okay, moving on to Alderman and committee reports.
Alderman Dorhoff. Alderman Milner.
Nope, I've got nothing.
Alderman Reese.
We're not supposed to talk about personal things, but I've been told to do something and then say I'm sorry for it. Another sale is this coming Wednesday. It's, you know, an estate sale, and all are welcome. Thank you. It will be quite an event.
Starting at what time?
Starting at nine o'clock in the morning. Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And if you really want to come off, please coffee.
Alderman Miller.
Yeah, I've got just a little bit. Attended Park Board meeting last week. The Park Board welcomed its newest member, Brett Reese. Kathy Ferris did another outstanding job on the developed tournament this year. She raised over $2,000. The tournament was dedicated to the dog park. Currently, we have a little over $6,000 in the fund for the new dog park, the new park. So that's going really well. We selected a location that is east of the amphitheater or east of the St. Cagro's basketball court. Lakeweed removal is still going as planned, and we're dating. There's several more applications to go this year in the future. You will see a huge improvement. You may not see it all this year, but you're going to see a big improvement in that as we continue for years to come on treatment. We also reviewed the tenure capital plan. And I would like to remind everybody that if you have a desire to contribute to the new dog park, we are welcoming any contributions you have. Obi Carl, he made an offer of using his dog worship, and I think several people are looking into that to talk with you about it, to promote that. And anybody here could take the donation. Chris Deal, Kathy Ferris, City Lineal Park Board. Check this needs to be made out to Truvin, Heartland Community Foundation, and then a memo put in Dog Park. Thank you. And Chris, was there anything I missed? Was that it?
Next Dog Park meeting is on Thursday, on this 22nd. We'll be reviewing our brochure. We'll be coming out soon with that and other updates.
And that will be at the Community Center at 6:00 PM, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Alderman Miller. And I just really want to commend Mr. Deal and the Park Board. I know there are two Park Board members sitting out here. Kathy Ferris, the fundraiser extraordinaire, is in her midst. And Sandy Franklin also is with us. People are excited about the Dog Park. It's just a buzz about town. So thank you for your work and thank you for your vision to add that to the amenities of our city. Alderman Davidson.
Several things.
I'm sorry, Alderman Dickerson. Apologize. Okay, yeah, Alderman Davidson.
Several things. One is I would like for everybody to keep in their hearts and prayers of the family of the Culpeper family. I'm a loyal employee of the city, a retired employee, so I ask that everybody keep them, the family, in prayers. I also want to commend the Police Department, the traction. I had the opportunity to be around some of those students, young adults, meeting. And they're, they are the future of our city. And so they've really got a lot of good ideas, and I'm looking forward to seeing the ideas that they come out with and moving forward with those. And kind of like, sounds like a broken record, but last, or last time I committed the Police Department for some work they did. The same, same business, similar incident, but they also, there was a theft. And by that evening, they had the suspects in custody. And I was even told that, I believe, the chief of police was there at about 7:30 or 8 o'clock at night. So he's leading by example, so I want to commend him as well, so that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Turner.
I was not able to make it to the planned zoning meeting, so...
Speaking about employees, I just want to remind the board, you got this notice in your mailbox about the employee appreciation luncheon. I would strongly encourage you, if you can, if your schedule allows that, for September 24th. Employees always enjoy seeing us celebrate with them, so... And then also, I wanted just to, because we don't have a meeting the first of September, I want to just remind you all that we do have a town hall meeting coming up September 7th at Harrisville United Methodist Church. Our presenter then will be Jeanette Flanner from Cass Career Center, telling us about what's going on there. So if there's no other comments or no other business, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion from Alderman. I'm sorry, questions from the media.
Well, I actually have one.
I got it.
I just wanted to clarify on the tax rate. And I know there's no such thing as an average house, but should the average resident, should they see a bunch of an increase in their taxes, a decrease or about neutral?
I've got totals for the entire city. I don't have any data for individual households. The county might be able to better address that.
Okay, so we don't know how it will actually affect individuals?
No, I do not. I'm sorry.
That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for overlooking you. I had a motion from Alderman Dickerson and a second from Alderman Milner. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you for adjourned.